Good afternoon, everyone. Obviously, we have a topic of some concern in the community today. So thank you all for attending. Today, for the record, is August 5th, 2025. It's 3:00 PM. This is a special meeting of the Prescott City Council. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protam Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Grady is excused from the meeting.
And before we start the agenda item, I will ask you all to stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our great Republican flag. Thank you. Please proceed.
Today's discussion is continuation of item HP25-004, continuation of an appeal with an updated design for review and discussion related to the proposed demolition of the existing building, construction of a 47-room, four-story boutique hotel, Prescott Plaza Hotel, location 136, 138, and 140, South Monizuma Street, APN 109-02-014A. Zoning, DTB Historic Preservation District 1, Courthouse Plaza. Applicant and owner, Jim Grissette, architect Doug Stroh. And I just want to outline for everybody the flow of today's meeting so that everybody is prepared. We will first receive a presentation from city staff, and then we will hear from the architect, correct, Alex?
Yes.
Mr. Doug Stroh. Council will have discussion, and then the mayor will open the floor to public comment. We have 32 public comment cards, so I respectfully ask that everybody please have your comments prepared when you come up to the microphone to speak. Please remember that you're limited to three minutes for your public comment. And if you're going to be simply repeating comments from a previous person, I would ask that you allow your time to be given to somebody else so that we can be as efficient as possible. Before Alex gets started, we're going to have just kind of an outline and overview from our city attorney on what the council is actually going to be considering today and what the parameters of any potential vote would be.
Yeah, thanks. Just as a reminder to council, generally speaking, when we sit in this room, council sits in a legislative capacity. But in appeals from the Historic Preservation Commission, you sit in a quasi-judicial role. The standard of proof is, or the standard of review is a de novo review, meaning you are independently evaluating the design and the criteria with the presentation today, the presentation you heard last week, and anything in the record as your guide. The historic design guidelines are the entirety of your parameters as you're evaluating this. I know you hear things about use, zoning, and so forth. There's a zoning process to follow. If this were to be passed, the zoning process has to be followed. There's an engineering process that would have to be followed. This here is a design process, and so you're evaluating based on the design. You can say yes, you can say no, but you should be able to articulate what the reasons are. Meaning if the applicant, if there was a no vote today and the applicant wanted to come forward, they should know exactly what they need to change to be able to come to council for approval. There's been discussions about the, kind of the stature or the procedure in this case of a continuation of appeal. The prior decision made in 2024, that's a final decision. So that decision is not being relitigated today. We're evaluating the new design. Now, the process for a historic preservation review is a evaluation by the historic preservation specialist, and then a hearing before the Prescott Preservation Commission, and then those can be appealed to council. So in this case, council heard from the applicant first two weeks ago, or three weeks ago now. But it did go through the historic preservation specialist for a review. You'll hear the presentation on that. It went to the Historic Preservation Commission, and you are here in the same status you would be on an, on an appeal. Keeping in mind that no decision is necessarily final in terms of a project. A project can always redesign and come back through that same process. So the staff will have a presentation, but ultimately, this is the council's decision, as I mentioned, based on the historic design guidelines, which is codified in ordinance number 3744. And you are able to approve, to deny, or to approve conditions based on what you hear and based on what the design is.
So not to put too fine of a point on that, but just to emphasize something that Joe said, in terms of the zoning, the zoning on this property says that by right, the owner is allowed to build a hotel here. The question isn't whether or not he's allowed to build a hotel. The question is, given the historic preservation guidelines, is the design acceptable? Is it compliant enough? And we're talking about guidelines versus regulations, and so it's within the discretion of the council to say, yes, the hotel meets the, the guidelines to our satisfaction, or no, the, the design does not meet, and here are the things we need to change. I just want to make that explicit. Alex, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members. My name is Alex Bramlett, and I'm the Planning Manager for the City of Prescott Planning and Zoning Division. Thank you for your time here this afternoon to review the continuation of an appeal for the Prescott Plaza Hotel. This is a four-story, 47-room hotel, and it, on the fourth floor, has a step-back, open-air terrace, and we're going to just dive right in. So I decided to take a kind of a really high-level approach and go through a bit more detail, and so that starts with where we're located. And we are in downtown Prescott. This is in the historic Row, or Whiskey Row area, across the street from and west of the Courthouse Plaza, and its address is 136, 138, and 140, South Monizuma Street. Indicated in the blue star is the subject property location, and it's in that purple area, which is the Downtown Business Zoning District. The zoning district enforces various components, largely the use and setback being some of those components. And as mentioned, hotels are allowed by right in this zoning district, and the setbacks are zero. So from the front, rear, and side property lines, there's a zero setback requirement for zoning.
Councilman Gambogi, do you have a statement or a question before we proceed?
I have a question of Joe.
Go ahead.
Just clarify, you mentioned ordinance 3744. So we're going to look at the current design of the hotel and how it comports with 3744.
That's correct. And ordinance 3744 was adopted in 1998, but it is the historic design guidelines for the Courthouse Plaza.
And that kind of designs the, the environment of what we're going to discuss today.
That's right.
I'm sorry, Alex. Please proceed.
Thank you. So beyond the baseline zoning classification, there are historic district overlays. So on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see what's the National District overlay. The subject property, again outlined in just the star, is within that orange area, and it's called the Courthouse Plaza National Historic District. And national districts are used as a tool to identify a community's historic resources. So on the right-hand side is another overlay, and the star again outlines the property, and it's in the blue area, and it's also called the Courthouse Plaza, but it's a local historic district. And so the designation of local historic districts further protects and enhances specific resources through the process of design review. So, excuse me. Local districts are how we implement the process of design review, and we do that through the Historic Preservation Master Plan. And this was adopted, as Joe just mentioned, in January of 1998. The Master Plan is a guide for the city, the Prescott Preservation Commission, or PPC, and the public in understanding and applying preservation principles. Shortly following the adoption of the Master Plan and ordinance, as Councilmember Gambogi was just referring to, for the Courthouse Plaza Local District was adopted. Adoption of this ordinance established the authority for the Courthouse Plaza Local District to fall under the jurisdiction of PPC review and approval for projects. So continuing with the larger picture overview, here's a general outline of the entire process. As I mentioned, the property is within the Courthouse Plaza Local District and falls under the jurisdiction of the PPC review for approval of the design. Following the review and approval of the design, as we've mentioned before, the project then needs to obtain a special use permit due to its size, and so that'll go back through the PPC for a courtesy review. Then the Planning and Zoning Commission will review and make a recommendation to council who will have the final consideration. At the same time, the applicant will also need to apply for a water service agreement application, and that process starts with the Water Issues Subcommittee, and then finally goes to city council for, again, final consideration. And then finally, after all this is done, the applicant then needs to obtain construction permits, which will encompass many things, some of which being the demolition, structural engineering elements, building, planning, and fire codes, right-of-way encroachments, and equipment staging. So again, this is the big picture, and I'd like to reemphasize that we're still at the first step, which is the design itself, and the other components will follow later. All right, so now that we're familiar with big picture, we'll talk about how, the steps of which we got to where we are. And so this project went through two PPC study sessions in March 2020, 2022, and July 2023, and then followed into a voting session in August 2023, where PPC denied the proposal. The applicant then appealed the denial, which appeared before a city council in March 2024, where council upheld the denial. Since then, the applicant has revised the design further and returned for a continuation of an appeal, which initially appeared before council on July 8th, 2025, voting session, and council deferred to a special meeting, why we're here today, pending an analysis from the Historic Preservation Specialist and review from PPC if possible. The Historic Preservation Specialist was able to conduct an analysis, and it's been included in the packet, and I will go into it in more detail here soon. Additionally, the PPC was able to hold a special meeting on July 22nd, 2025. After several hours of deliberation and many public comments, the PPC voted 3-1 to recommend denial of the proposal. I'd like to note that there are also a few members of the PPC here today who can speak further to that if desired. So I'll just run through now various components that do or do not meet the criteria for the design itself. So we can see here is a rendering of what the Plaza Hotel looks like from Monizuma Street. And what the guidelines largely emphasize is symmetrical massing, pedestrian-friendly on the storefronts in the first level, the fabric awnings, which they have included, brick, natural stone, inconsistency with the district. Continuing on in areas that they have met the criteria, so looking at kind of a lot of the window bases, they are vertical orientation, one over one, and they're opaque, again, really emphasizing that storefront on the first level.
Councilwoman Furworth, you had a question?
I do. Thank you. Question about the storefront that you just have in the back right there. You just brought it up.
Yep.
That's a storefront, but it's at the back of the building. Do our guidelines, I didn't see in our guidelines that a storefront is a storefront regardless of whether it's in the front or the back. So this back design, I'm not sure it meets the storefront definition of windows and those kind of things. Could you comment?
I think the general, yes, this is the storefront. It's a mercantile for the hotel, and this is the alley side. It also has a secondary access to the hotel itself on the front side. This is going to be, no, not specifically a storefront, but the, the emphasis being pedestrian-oriented, the opaque windows to make it kind of available for folks to want to go in. It will have a lobby and kind of a, a seating area.
So the fact that we need to have, what do you call them here? I think you call them transoms? Not transom, the one at the bottom, the fixed to the panels that you want. That doesn't matter in the back of the building? We have them in the front, but they wouldn't need to be in the back? I didn't understand that.
Is there a section in a document you're referring to? I can take a look.
Yep, hold on, let me find it. Yeah, in 3704, page seven. Storefronts should have opaque, solid-bottomed panels, approximately one and one and a half to three feet high. Individual glass panes will be above them in an orientation with a fixed transom above it. So in the back, I saw the fixed transom above the three glass panels, but it looks like they're all just glass from top to bottom. No, no solid bottom panels. Am I, am, am I understanding from the picture?
And you're wanting to know if this applies to the alley side as well?
Correct. And I didn't see that there was any definition of a storefront is a storefront. It didn't say it doesn't matter. So I, I just, I'm sorry, I just got the, the version with the front and the back over the weekend, so I've been now studying it. But I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly.
Yep.
That a storefront, so, okay. So that's an issue. Thank you.
So continuing on with more areas that it meets the criteria, this is a site plan. The red area is outlining the property boundary. So you can see it's built up to the, the sidewalk on the right-hand side of the screen, and it goes for the whole width of the property, which is encouraged by the guidelines. We don't want gaps in the streetscape. And then it goes close to the rear of the alley as well. Again, there are no front or rear setback requirements. And then on the sides, which is the top and bottom of the screen, are the side setbacks, and you see that step back a little to meet fire requirements. So carrying on with the meets criteria, there are demolition conditions that need to be met in order for the structure to be eligible for demolition. And there are three of them, one of which needs to be met. And the first one is the building is a non-contributor to the historic district, and this one is where it complies because it is not a contributor to the historic district. And at the bottom of the screen, there's an area where it partially meets the criteria is, is they use wood for doors, windows, and storefronts. The windows are wood frame, and wood frame with aluminum cladding, and the doors will be glass. So here is kind of one of the bigger areas where it's just, does not meet the criteria, and the criteria itself says require zero setback at the front property line for at least 50% of the front facade and 100% of the second and third floor facades, including the roof line. So they are meeting that with the second and third floor facades. They're all the way up to the property line 100%. The portion of including the roof line, it does step back on the fourth floor. And in the, on the third floor, the total height to the top of Parapet is 36 feet 6 inches, and then the total top of the height to the elevator overrun is 48 feet. So just to highlight some changes that we've seen since the submittal in March of 2024, they reduced by one total story, so now it's four. They lowered the building height to 43 feet 6 inches with, again, the elevator overrun at 48 feet. The rooftop terrace moved to the fourth floor. They added in Juliet balconies to the second and third stories. They removed the sandstone freeze banding, and they configured the window and entry treatment at this sidewalk level. We've seen these, just to throw them in to show how this would integrate into Whiskey Row from a couple different perspective shots. So in summary, again, the applicant is still in the, the beginning stage for the design of the overall process. It's focused solely on the Courthouse Plaza design criteria from the Historic Preservation Master Plan and decisions not based off compliance fully with, with the guidelines. Hotels are allowed by right in the Downtown Business District. The current design reflects changes based on previous commission and council input. And lastly, approval of the design does not constitute approval of the construction project. Further, they'll have to do the special use permit, the water service agreement, and then continue forth with the engineering plans, comply with building codes, and other permitting. So here, just a slide for you all to recommend a motion to move, to approve, or deny HP25-005. And as Sarah mentioned, the applicant's representative is here and has slides to present.
Alex, is there any reference to balconies extending out of the no setback from, from the building?
The guidelines don't have any contemplation for balconies.
So they aren't even considered or referenced?
They were not, I don't think, a prominent feature in, in the 90s when this was being, when the plan was being adopted.
So it's not a setback, it's a set forward? All right. Well, where are we going to proceed at this point?
Would you like to hear next from the applicant?
We can hear from the applicant if he wants to make another presentation. Mr. Stroh?
Do you have that clicker? Alex? Thanks, Chelsea. So this is the beginning of the slideshow? I'll find out, I guess. Good afternoon. My name is Doug Stroh. I founded Stroh Architecture in Prescott in 1992, going on about 33 years.
Mr. Stroh, can you move the microphone a bit closer to you? Thank you. Thanks, Chelsea.
No problem. Is that better? Okay. Doug Stroh, Stroh Architecture, 1992. I was on the PPC for 13 years, chairman for three years. I have personally designed 23 historic projects, and we won six Governor Awards for those efforts. We have designed the Plaza Hotel to meet the Courthouse Plaza Historical District guidelines, and I wanted to say, I believe, the Preservation Commission voted on our project, or voted our project down because of a misunderstanding about the number of stories that we're allowed to have. The paper misquoted the, the guidelines, too. The guidelines clearly say that, the guidelines say that the average storage, story height is 12 feet, and it says, "Three-story buildings shall be between 40 and 48 feet." Does not say you can't have three stories. And it also says, "No building shall be greater than 48 feet." In surveying the existing buildings in the district, probably the vast majority would not meet all the criteria in here, but we think we're pretty close to meeting all of them. And to Lois's point about the back windows, we'd be more than happy to put sections of opaque, you know, material like stone or something on the bottom of the, the storefronts in the back. Not a problem. Per the National Park Service, "New infill buildings, when visible and in close proximity to historic buildings, they must be subordinate to those historic buildings. New buildings must not attempt to replicate historic buildings in the district and to avoid creating a false sense of historic development." I remember when this building came through, we considered it a non-conforming building. It was like a replica building. So we'll go through these pictures real quick. This is the, the bottom one is the, the basement, and we're going to address the structural engineering on that a little bit later. But you can see, we pulled the basement in away from the existing buildings. That will help the structural engineer develop a system. If you go at a 45-degree angle, that's where the forces go from the existing buildings. So those will be shored up, and that'll be addressed later by a, a person we have here. I wanted to address some other issues. These are the typical floor plates.
Councilwoman Furworth had a question for you, Doug.
Yeah. Back to the previous slide for the, the basement level. The existing building, you've got the property lines. I saw it also on the Alex's slides, but I held my question because I knew you were coming. The existing building, it looks like the building to the, to the north, because this is history, creeps over the property line. Is that true? Is this drawing representative of what actuality is?
It is. It's been surveyed a couple of times. The field building does encroach onto Grissette's property by about three feet, and I think that's what he was alluding to at the PPC meeting about those parking spaces. The stairs. The staircase back there and stuff kind of goes into what he now is using for parking. So it's, it's not unusual, where you're, you know, we're
It's history.
Trying to be neighborly.
Correct.
And, and all the buildings on Whiskey Row are kind of like this. So it's, it's a very unique street from many aspects.
Thank you.
So these are the floors for the, the rooms. The top one is the first floor with the hotel lobby, and the, the rooms on the first floor. And on the second floor, on the first floor, there's a little gift shop in the very back. And so on the second floor, it's all rooms, and we are proposing and showing that the two larger rooms on the very east end have balconies on the second and third floor. People like that. There's a lot of, a lot of buildings in, in Prescott with balconies, and we'll get into that. And I think it's something that people would like. These are the two-dimensional drawings of the storefront and the rear of the property, and I think we can take that same granite bottom piece there on the backside too, Lois. These are the north and south elevations.
Councilwoman Furrworth, go ahead and ask.
Sorry, one more question from the back of the building. How, the back of the building, how does somebody who, who needs, who's handicapped and needs ADA access, how are they getting into the building from the alley?
There's a lift back there. You can see it, where am I? Oh. See in the lower left-hand corner of what is called the second floor plan, and also the same lower left-hand corner of the first floor plan?
Yep.
We have kind of a miniature elevator, so that'll provide ADA access to the project.
And will they enter it on the first floor through the
They'll, yeah.
The doorway?
Yes, that doorway on the first floor.
Like a doorway into the alley there? Is that what, how they're entering it, or?
Yes, yes, from the alley. You see it, the, before you get to the door, the stairs go up.
Yep.
And so you can go up that way, and, or you can come in directly from the alley. So there's a lift there because a lot of the people
A lift with a little bit of an, a little lobby to the left of the lift? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't tell from the doors.
A lot of people will be dragging their suitcases, so you don't want to drag them upstairs, and well, you have to be ADA too, so.
You know, Doug, I'm a little confused with the statement that you made regarding the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, where you said, "When visible and in close proximity to historic buildings, the new construction must be subordinate to those contributing buildings." So are you referencing the current building being subordinate, or your proposed building being subordinate?
The proposed building, Mayor. The, the first iteration of this project by a previous person, it was very ornate and wasn't symmetrical. It, it was more like a focal point on the block, and you don't want that. You want it to blend in and kind of be neutral, and I think that's where our image is now. It fits in well. It's, it doesn't have all the, the ornamentation that, for example, St. Michael's has, or the Palace, and that's the intent of the National Park Service, and we think we've met that. It's, it's nice, but it's, doesn't have all the bells and whistles that the first one did, or the, or, you know, ornamentation that you see on St. Michael's, which is one of my favorite buildings. I, I like all that stuff.
So you're referencing only the architectural features being subordinate, and not the massing size and scale being subordinate?
Everything.
So you're trying to say that the four-story hotel is subordinate to the smaller buildings to the left and the right?
Well, subordinate in design, not massing is relative to its size. It's 50-foot wide, and I think like 36 feet high. It'll read more like a three-story building from the street, because we set back the, the fourth floor, and that helps diminish the, the feeling of the building.
Oh, I'm sorry, Doug, but that makes no sense to me. Please continue.
Okay. Here's the view again, Mayor. It's very simple, very clean. Here's the two north and south elevations. They also are very simple and straightforward.
Councilman Moore, you had a question?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Doug, I'm a little confused by these renderings as I was looking through my packet over the weekend, showing picture, or pardon me, windows on the first and second floor when there are adjacent buildings. What good is a window going to do on a first and second floor when you have, when buildings on either side of you?
Well, it's set back from the other buildings about five feet on the south side, and three or four feet on the north side.
So you're going to be looking at a wall?
Yep.
So it's just basically to allow light into the room?
It would be light and fresh air, and exiting.
Thank you.
That meets, you know, meets the building codes. That's not else you can do when you're sliding a building like that in. Like in big cities, when you have a high rises all mashed together, it's the same situation.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could please allow the presenter and the council to discuss the project and not engage in comments, laughter, clapping, discussion, you'll all have an opportunity to speak when this portion of the meeting is completed. Thank you.
This looks like it got loaded twice. Anyway, here's a picture from, you know, the Courier, and it kind of superimposes our elevation on top of the existing building, so you can see the difference. From the street, it's going to appear to be like five or six feet higher, very similar to the height of the field building to the north, to the right. And then this view is like from the middle of Montezuma, so you can see the, the fourth floor is set back, so you're not going to see that unless you're across the street. And of course, the, the fourth floor is only 43 feet, and there's three or four other buildings that are taller in town. For example, the Tiz building is 57 feet. And, you know, you have the, the federal courthouse and the, the hotel and the palace. So here's a diagram that kind of points out all the different elevations. And as you can see, it's going to read more like a 36-foot-high building. The fourth floor is at 43 feet, and just the elevator overrun in the back is 48 feet, which is not going to be very visible at all. The massing is 50% of the St. Michael's. The massing is 2/3 of the Palace, and the massing is 1/6 of the new hotel on Cortez Street. It'll have two fireplaces on the deck, and those are not going to be wood burning, so we won't be smoking up the Courthouse Plaza anymore. This is another isometric drawing, kind of showing what the street would look like in an isometric form. There is the, the hole in Whiskey Row, which of course doesn't meet the guidelines either, but you can kind of get a feel for the massing and how it would fit with the other buildings. It's more the massing to fit, but the looks to be a little bit more vanilla. This is a, obviously a shot looking down on the deck.
Councilwoman Furrworth had a question.
Yeah, Doug, I have a question. One of the, the guidelines on, in 3704 guidelines set on page four says, "All setbacks shall be zero for 50%, blah, blah, blah," up to including the roof line. So here you have the setback is not including a roof line at the front of the building. How did you think about this design, which I read as not meeting our guidelines? Beautiful, but not meeting our guidelines. How do you think about that?
Well, the, the top was pushed back to make it appear smaller, the massing. You're right, we have the option to bring that fourth floor wall all the way out to the front, and have that whole front open, and have the patio behind it, like the Palace. But that makes it, you know, appear larger, and just from the use of the patio, people like to see the stars, like to, you know, look around, look down, and, you know, to me, from a design standpoint, this, this makes it better, not having that big mass. We, we, you know, per the guidelines, we could take that fourth floor up another five feet, right to the property line, and make it look much bigger and more massive, but we felt that this was a, a better neighbor, not doing that. There will be canopies, the owner is anticipating doing the types of canopies that will come out from the wall, they're mounted to the wall, so in the summer, during the daytime, it would provide shade for the top balcony. So basically, it's, I think, a better solution than a, a big mass right on the, the sidewalk, you know, 48 feet tall, versus a, this is, what, 34 feet tall is how it's going to look.
Did you consider any other kind of more delicate, rather than the Palace, kind of a front-open section completely closed in? Did you consider anything more delicate that still got the guideline met to the roof line?
Well, you could put columns out there, like poles, and you could put a roof on it, like a lightly sloped roof. It would meet the guidelines. We could take it up to 48 feet, it would meet the guidelines. I just think that
You just like this design better?
I think everybody would. You know, versus looking out at a tunnel vision like that. This being open, I think would work better. This is more like the Raven patio, for example, or the, it's identical pretty much to the nice Apitius balcony in the back. Have you seen that? That is a, a deck that's open, and half of it has a roof on it, basically that. And I just think from an architectural standpoint and from a people's standpoint, I'd rather be sitting when the weather's nice, out in the open like that. And if you're sitting there looking at all the Christmas lights or whatever, I just, in the sky, I, it's, it's much better from a design, from an architectural standpoint.
I understand, but it does degrade our guidelines, so. Okay, thank you.
And I've been told the guidelines are more like suggestions? Are they like code?
In some of the ones in 3704, it's very clear about what's required. It starts the paragraph saying, "Required." So zero setbacks to the roof line is a required element, and so I just was wondering if you had done any design work to try and meet the requirement. So, thank you.
That could easily be done, Lois. I think it would be detrimental to it, but that's something that we'll have to, you know, consider. This is another view in the back. And then just a little content. Prescott's always been changing, and, you know, going through different iterations throughout history, it's never been static. The, the building with the tall parapet in the center was the original courthouse, obviously prior to 1900. And this, of course, was the second courthouse that was built in, in 19, I think it was about 1938. It started falling apart real bad, and so they tore it down. And of course, this is the courthouse we have now. Different styles, different shapes. Going back a little farther, in 1895, the Courier was located on the corner of Montezuma and Goodwin. And you can see it was all masonry, and it had balconies over the sidewalk. And the OK Lodging House is where the miner's candle started the fire. As it approached the Courier, they discovered that there was no water. And then the fire chief decided, should I blow it up or not? And unfortunately, he decided to not blow up the building to stop the fire. So of course, that was the aftermath. Sustainability was being practiced in 1900. They're salvaging all the brick. This is interesting. After the fire, the Scopel OK House became the Scopel Hotel, and this too is on the same site where our little barbecue place is. And it was four stories, I scaled it out, it's about 57 feet tall, and to the top of the sign, it's about 62 feet. It also has balconies that overhang the sidewalk, and this is very, and it's got a strange balcony around the top floor, which is probably a sleeping area in the summer. I would, I would assume people were sleeping out there. And this is what I was talking about, Mayor, the ornamentation on this building, the, the lintels, the cornices, I mean, very, a lot of decor compared to our more plain, you know, straightforward building. And of course, this was downtown Prescott in 1901 to 1903-ish, where everybody moved across the street, very innovative. This is a huge building called the Abopai Club. It was down around Sheldon and Granite Street, just another, in, in looking through the history, we have just hundreds of buildings that were really outstanding, that most of them were burnt down, or they, they were falling apart. So here's another one that's more like today with the big onings. It's the exact same onings we're proposing. You can see all the ornamentation on the St. Michael's, and even the Matt's Building and the Palace, and you can see the original iteration of the building that we're talking about down there beyond the field building. Oops. This is what the head hotel used to look like, and it too had lots of balconies overhanging the sidewalk, and unfortunately, they modernized it and stuckled over it like they did many of the buildings in the 60s and 70s to create a modernism look, which then later, you know, was covered up with ski jumps, and then the last 10 or 20 years, those were taken off, and the stucco, if it could come off, was taken off. So this is just another example of a, a deck overlooking a sidewalk and the walkway into the main door. Lois, there's your roof, that could be done. Once again, I just think from a people's standpoint, from an architectural standpoint, it'd be nicer to be wide open. And the compromise that we were talking about is like having the movable canvas onings that come, come across. That would be ideal, you know, in the, like now, a day like now, well, there wouldn't be anybody up there, but if there were, you'd want that canvas, you know, closed to provide shade, and, you know, fans and things like that. So that's a possibility for discussion. And here, of course, these buildings are not quite in the Courthouse Plaza, And here, of course, these buildings are not quite in the Courthouse Plaza, but once again, they, they show the permanent metal canopies over the sidewalks, all the way up, you know, six or seven feet into the city property. And as you recall, and not that many years ago, the, the ski jumps covered up most of those buildings. We have done a lot of the uncovering of the buildings. We did the Bashford, the Bashford Building renovations and things. And it, it was really nice to open up a building that hasn't been touched for like 50 years. It's pretty fascinating. We also did this building. It had ski jumps, and it uncovered the clear-story windows that you see and the outline of the original Goldwater sign, which we replicated. And of course, those canopies also have, for over 100 years, been over city property. This is the Knights of Apithyius building I was talking about, Lois. There is basically what we're proposing up there on the top. It's got an open portion of the, of the deck, and the back half has got a covering. Those are permanent. It's not a movable type canvas, which I think makes more sense from an architectural standpoint. And that building was recently measured, and it's 57 feet tall in the front. And all of our measurements, none of them go to the mechanical units, which probably make every building in downtown Prescott now two to four feet taller with, with the definition compared to a planning and zoning definition for height. This is another balcony that has a shade structure on it, and it's got the railing right there. People can stand there with their drinks, et cetera. And obviously, the fire department's not concerned about people throwing stuff down. And this is just, in talking about change and things, a, this is the church on Cortez Street, and I assume someday it will probably be sold and redeveloped, so that's going to be a change. And of course, the, the upcoming hotel will be changing that view. And I was up on the parking garage the other day, and of course, the top three levels are pretty much empty. That was on a Friday. And you can see the, the buildings have a lot of stuff on the roof, and they're not concealed by the parapets. It's kind of an awful first view of Prescott. I'd almost wondered if some screening should be on the parking garage to not have to look at that. It's, you know. But anyway, there's Grissette's Building there on the left. You can see, there it is.
Councilman Gamboge had a question.
You know, in the days of time cards, I wish I had time cards, because I think in the last three weeks, I spent 50 hours studying this whole subject. And I spent, just recently, I spent an hour and a half with Malcolm Barrett Jr., who downloaded all the photos from the Charlotte Hall Museum. And it was a fascinating tour of downtown. And I convinced him to come and give us a presentation of what I saw, so I want to thank you for giving us an orientation.
Thank you, Ted.
Couple of things I remember. That stucco was to cover up the Prescott brick, which was probably discontinued in the 1920s because it deteriorates.
Some of it was to cover up the brick.
Yeah, and which the current structure, the back wall is Prescott brick. I think the front wall's been covered up. And you're right, in that ordinance, 3744, it says the parapet needs to be tall enough to block out all those things we see on the roof. So I wanted to thank you for giving us an orientation. I think, I think the Goldwater Building must have had 10 different facelifts. And where Bashford Court is now used to be J.C. Penney's, and where, next to the Goldwater Building, used to be Sears. So you're right, Prescott downtown has changed continuously, and it will continue to change.
That's correct, Ted. And you're right about the Prescott brick. It was quickly produced in Chino Valley. It wasn't high-fired, so it was more susceptible to the face kind of chipping off. That primarily happened on the south side of buildings, because in the winter, it would freeze, the bricks would wake up in the morning, so to speak, at 10 degrees. And then that sun comes in, and the bricks are upper 80 or 90, so it continued, went through that freeze thaw. So if you want to see the original bricks, you go to the, the alley behind the, the buildings on Gurley, and that's the original soft brick. And a lot of the, the buildings we've restored, there's a trick. It's not cheap, but you pull the brick out, turn it around, put it back in. And we've done that on a lot of the buildings downtown, and so all of a sudden, you have a, a new brick where the initial one might be, have holes in it from, from signs being drilled into it or whatever. And so it's pretty fascinating. And as you probably learned, all the buildings had big skylights in them, and they had the big, tall storefronts, so in the morning, they opened those up, and then the sun would blast in through most of the building, and then the, you know, the back would light up, too.
And those metal ski slope onings were downright ugly.
They were, but they saved people on tax money. The story is...
Okay, I'll bite. Why?
Well, at one time, the city council, way before you guys, passed a, a law that the buildings were taxed based on the square foot. And it was kind of during a depressed time, I think it was the 60s or 70s. And so people started putting those up, because the city required them to literally close them off, so they couldn't be used, so they were tax cheats. And so that's why they did that. They couldn't really rent the upper floors that much by that time in history, and so they put those up to cheat the tax man. And so, anyway, the Grissette Building, it, let's see if you can see it. There you go. You can see a little history here, too. You can see where on his building, it's concrete block, which would not have been the material they would have used back in, you know, 1900, 1901. That basically proves the building collapsed at one time, which was in 1967, I think. And the whole, the roof and the, the parapet and everything came down. And so it was just quickly, Otwell came up with a new front on the building, and that's where it exists today. And you might note, that parapet is four feet at the lower portion, bigger, actually. That is the only building with a parapet that hides that big old mechanical unit. Claimed fame. But, you know, maybe there's some consideration someday to the view from the parking garage. It's just kind of a, a lousy initial view of our city, so. I'm almost done. So I just want to go over some of the comments we've heard online and, and person and stuff. And, you know, there's a lot about us bribing all of you. I can assure everyone that we haven't bribed anybody. Montezuma will not be closed down. The sidewalk will not be closed down. It will go out five feet in a, like a wood tunnel, exactly like what existed for, what, a year or two, when the birdcage burned down. The alley might need to be closed during the day for maybe a week or two for staging. It is the goal of the Mr. Grissette to do this as a component-built, pre-built-type rooms, where a whole room is just lifted into place. And that will really speed up the construction, and hopefully, that will work out. Our new building here, where, where the lot is and the building is, will be more structurally sound than any other building in the Courthouse Plaza.
Councilwoman Ferworth had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the decision, again, I don't know if it's design ethics or, or what, but the decision to, right now, 3704, page 13, says, "Required use of wood for doors, windows, and storefronts. Vinyl-clad wood is acceptable only if the material gives the appearance of wood. Aluminum or bare metal is not acceptable for any application." And you have, looks like, pretty large glass doors and panels in the front. I don't know if those have any metal around them. And then the, this, what I read in the package was that the, you're having wood framed with aluminum cladding as the windows. Is that correct? Because it says aluminum is not acceptable for any application in our guidelines.
No, it'll be a material, and I forget the name of it now, but it looks just like wood. It's kind of like a hardy plank material or whatever, and it'll be stained. And I've seen it and touched it, and I mean, it really looks like wood, but it'll always look like wood, where real wood is, in our climate, especially with climate change, would be a, a real nightmare product to have. But you won't be able to tell the difference. It will look like wood, all the doors, the frames, and...
But what's it made of?
It's a composite material, and I can get you the exact name of the manufacturer.
Colby Heritage Series Wood Windows.
Colby Heritage. Yeah. It's like, are you familiar with hardy plank?
Okay, so that kind of meets the requirement of what we call right now, like vinyl-clad wood is acceptable, kind of, it's, it's faux wood.
We're not doing that. We're doing, it looks like wood.
It looks like wood.
It's, are you familiar with hardy plank, Lois?
Yes, it's on the side of my house.
It's like that. You drive by a hardy plank building.
It's very good for fireproofing. Yes. So a question about, so let's go, I'll, I'll give you on the windows here, but I want to talk about the big glass doors. There, there really isn't anything else on Whiskey Row that, that has big glass doors like that, that I can remember, but I'm sure you're going to educate me as to what is actually wrong in my memory.
Well, I'd have to go from store to store. I haven't specifically looked at that, but...
I did a Google Walk.
No?
Google Earth Walk. I didn't see any big, modern, beautiful glass doors.
I can assure you, we will not have beautiful, modern glass doors.
You will not?
No. We will not.
Okay, so we'll need to follow up on that, on what that's going to be.
That could be a stipulation, yeah. I mean, we're, we tried our best, but, you know, that's a good, a good pickup.
Okay, thank you.
Where am I here? Oh, the building will be structurally more sound than any existing buildings, obviously. 120 years later, we have very stringent building codes. It'll be totally sprinkled, so it basically could become a fire block and a structural block in the middle of the, the, the block. I don't think that's a huge situation. But we feel this building will be an economic engine for all of the property owners on the plaza. It'll bring more people with more money and more spending in all the different shops, and it'll create a lot of income for the city, too. So as you know, a historic district, it's essential that it's successful, and if it's successful, the owners will keep the buildings up, and the tenants will keep coming, the, tourists will keep coming. It's, it's kind of like a wheel, as long as you keep that, that district up. The opposite example is Winslow, Arizona. They've probably torn down at least a dozen of those beautiful historic buildings they had on Main Street, and that's just their attitude. And the owners had no other choice, really, because you can't rent them. It's just they've allowed the whole downtown district that could have been sparkling, but 20 years ago, they made some bad decisions, in my opinion, so we don't want to do that. Mr. Grissette has a potential staging area available to him, about three blocks from the site. Another thing I read lately that we, affects everybody, is in 2020, there are 236 Airbnbs in this city. As you guys probably know, now, there are 766 Airbnbs in our neighborhoods. You know, our six blocks, we've got like three. And it's a 98% growth. It's an issue. And I think every additional hotel room that we build will hopefully diminish their business, and hopefully someday, they would change those from daily to a long-term rental, so. I wanted to say that I agree with the words of...
Councilman Gamboge had a question.
Yeah, I think this is the 11th meeting on this hotel. And from the people who like the hotel, they liked the previous design earlier. And I've sat through 11 meetings where somebody in the audience is redesigning this. This ordinance, 3744, there are 25 criteria, and as I understand it, the hotel meets 23. One partially, and the other one, they're saying we don't meet it. I think we ought to keep this discussion defined to those two criteria that are not part of the conformance.
Okay. Do you have a specific question that I can help you with?
Councilman Montoya.
I guess my, my question, thank you, Mayor, my question would be, at the last Preservation Commission meeting, you suggested at that meeting that you were willing to do some stipulations to conform with these things that are non-conformance of the guidelines as it stands right now. Or is there any capacity on your, that you or Mr. Grissette is willing to do for today to do that?
Well, we're open to suggestions. We're not stuck on this, Brandon. We're open to listening to you, listening to everybody.
But I don't want to go down that rabbit hole.
Well, and I'll, and I'll say, Doug, I don't think anyone up here is a qualified architect to, to give you that insight. And that's what kind of worries me, is that I don't know that we should be leading the design on it. I, I do think that, you know, it's clear to me that your client has the right to build this hotel. That's not, as the city manager and the city attorney laid out at the beginning of this meeting, that's not what we're describing, what we're deciding today. We're, we're deciding if you meet the guidelines. My, my concern is that if I have to make a determination on whether you meet the guidelines right now, the answer is no. But if, if you're willing to say there are, there's stipulations that you're going to meet it, and I, I don't, I'm not an architect. I don't know how to design a hotel. I don't know how to achieve the effect that you're trying to achieve on that balcony without doing what you're doing right now. You're the professional who's been doing this for probably longer than I've been eligible to vote in elections. So, yeah, I would guess so.
Well...
I'm 40, so yes, I'm going to go with yes. But, but my point is, I don't, I don't know that it's appropriate from our perspective, from the dais, to tell you how to do your job. All we can really decide, as I understand, is do you meet the guidelines? It sounds like there's some capacity for you and your client to meet some stipulations. I, I'd like to hear more about that, but I'm not, I can't tell you how to do that. That's beyond my level of expertise.
Well, from what I've heard, Lois has come up with a lot of good points, and, you know, the wood issue, I think we've covered that. The glass doors, that's an oversight. I totally agree with you. The, the roof over the patio is something that we feel, feel pretty strongly about having it open and knowing that we would do one of those canvas, uh, uh, canopies, roofs that would open up over the whole thing in hot summer days or rainy days or even cold winter nights. And I, I think you could consider that a roof. I don't think it defines what a roof is. And it is the same that was approved for the Knights of Apithyius Building. So I don't see a lot of sticking points, and... I don't see a lot of sticking points. And, you know, adding granite to the bottom of the windows in the back, I mean, those are all good valid points. And from what I've heard, I think it's just this roof issue.
Yeah, and I think the roof issue, again, I'll tell you, from an aesthetic of what you're describing as a user of that hotel in the future potentially, or the wine bar, or whatever it is, I agree. I think open-air design is nice. I think people will enjoy it. But unfortunately, I think that the guidelines kind of lay it out, that that's just not there, unfortunately. And I would that I could, but again, I think the position we're a little bit in here right now is that we have guidelines, we're being asked to, if you meet the guidelines on that specific front. And it sounds like there's not a lot of, it sounds a little bit, we're at a little bit of a logjam here, because I think unless we can find a stipulation that you can agree to, I don't see how we can move forward.
Do you think a canvas roof is a roof, or are you looking for something you can walk on?
I think a retractable canvas roof is probably not going to get the job done, to be perfectly honest. That's my sense. I'm not going to speak for the rest of the folks up here on the dais, but my sense would be that that's not, that, you know, there's the spirit of the law and the letter of the law, right? And I think, you know, maybe, you know, spirit of the law says that a canvas roof might work, but I think because of the intensity around this project, that we really have to hold ourselves to account to what the guidelines say. I think that's unfortunately where we're at. Again, my job, I don't know, I can't go back in time and pick the brains of the people who created, you know, 34, 3744, and ask them exactly what their intent was and what they envisioned. It's like trying to go back and look at the Constitution and know exactly what the founding fathers thought. It's not, it's difficult to do. But my sense is, in absence of being able to do that, it sounds like the guidelines don't allow for that. And again, I would be curious what redesign you could get that might get that done, you know? You featured the, in your presentation, you featured the Ravens design. I don't know about that. I would love to see iterations of this, again, in the spirit of what I'm saying, and what the city attorney and the city manager said at the beginning of this meeting. I believe pretty firmly, we cannot stop you from building a hotel here. That seems really clear to me. What we can do is ask that you conform to our guidelines. And I want to give you and Mr. Grissette credit for having modified your plans significantly along the way. And I hate to be here and say, I still think you need to do more, but unfortunately, I still think you need to do more. And I, it's, I think the biggest sticking point is the roof, is the rooftop arc component of it. I don't know how we get through that. This design that you're showing us, Knights of Apitius, something like that could work. But here's the problem I have, Doug, is that I don't know that I can agree to a stipulation without a rendering. Because without a rendering to really see and understand it, it's going to be difficult for me to get to yes. And I think part of that is, there's all these people here who are going to hold us to account. And there's more people, I'm sure, watching on Facebook, and more people are going to read about it in the paper tomorrow. I, again, I'll say, we can't stop you from building a hotel. That's clear. But what we can do is make sure you conform to our guidelines. And I think more work needs to get done. I would hope that there's the capacity to work as we have thus far, to kind of modify and get there.
We totally agree. We want to, definitely want everyone to be agreeable on the city council to what we're doing. And I've got some great ideas that we could do, a nice thin roof with, you know, structural metal and things like that, little ornamentation. I think it would look pretty nice. Not this.
Yeah, we're not here to redesign your project. We're here to decide on the proposal that have come before us right now.
Okay.
So, Councilman Gamboge, did you have an additional comment?
That does a pretty good job. I go back to the fact that we have 25 criteria. You've met 23 of them. There's been other projects that have been, that's 23 and a half, actually, if you count the partials. So that's 94%. And we've passed projects in the past with less than 94% conformance. And we're not here to go down the rabbit hole of redesign. Our job is to look at the two, that one's at partial, and one that the staff says is not, and decide whether we're going to approve this current design or not. We're not redesigning your hotel.
Sure. Councilwoman Ferworth.
I agree with what Brandon was saying. If I, for me, what's major, major is the word roof line.
Okay.
Not roof, roof line. So I think that gives you a lot of creativity to figure out something that zero setbacks to a roof line, not a fixed roof. The other one for me is the glass doors. That is, really stands out as a major one. And the third major one for me is the overhanging balconies. Now, we just approved Juliet balconies that the people over at the Assembly at Old City Hall has Juliet balconies, that you stand in the room, and you open the doors and look out your Juliet balcony. So there's precedence on Juliet balconies. There's no precedent on the courthouse facing for overhanging balconies. And I think the Preservation Commission did a very nice job discussing some of the concerns with that. And then, the minor one for me is that rear storefront, the color of the roof material that you discussed. There is page seven, and our guidelines talk about, I'm sorry, page 10, talk about more earth tone as compared to what you're showing. So I think there's, you've come a long way versus last year's design, but there's still, I think, room to go. And I believe in private property rights, so it is what it is. And you follow our guidelines. That's all we're looking for.
Sure. I think we're very close. I appreciate the input. And we can certainly address those issues of concern. And, you know, it would be like a light tan rubber roof. You know, all the rest of the roofs, as you saw, were bright white, pretty much, but we won't be doing that. Anyway.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Doug. Thanks for coming here today.
Thanks, Connie.
You know, for the benefit of the audience, I just want to say a few things. I'm very well-traveled. I've lived, I grew up in Europe, and I love architecture. I love the history. I've spent months and months and months at Charlotte Hall. I personally restored 14 historic properties. My own home is 125 years old. I do this every day. I owned a design-build firm in the valley for 40 years. These are guidelines. And when you work in this field, you understand the difference between requirements and guidelines. You've done a very good job in modifying that hotel from the first design. I loved the first design. It was stylish. I think it was, it would have been a wonderful thing for downtown. This, pretty much, to me, it's beautiful, but it looks like everything else downtown. And I know that made the Historic Preservation Commission happier. From a design aspect, it's Latin. But I will tell you, I like it, because it's going to make everybody else happy, that it's going to look like everything else down there. The balconies, and, you know, if you stayed in any major city in this country, New York, Chicago, San Francisco, I don't care, those windows, you look out a window at another building. That's just the way it is. We need that for egress.
Sure.
So this building is historically compatible, in my mind. And it very, it says, anywhere you look in any kind of estate historic preservation requirement, they don't want a new construction building in a historic area, and you know this, to copy any historic buildings. This is the way it is in this industry. I think you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
The other thing about it, I know a lot of people have had a little bit of heartburn with the embossed wood window. I sat on the Historic Preservation Window Guidelines in Phoenix for many years, and I was very, I was outvoted. I didn't want vinyl. I didn't think it had any place in a historic structure. Now, a metal, in fact, Lois, if you go a little bit further down on what you were reading, the very last sentence you left out, it says steel may be used on doors and windows if painted a compatible color with the rest of the building. So steel doors are actually allowed. Those balconies, that's all over history, going back hundreds of years. Every single implement that you have on that building is something that can be well-established in the historic area. Now, I'm going to give you a word of advice, unsolicited. I had a wedding venue. I restored the oldest chapel down here many years ago, when it was a territory, right down on Carlton and Cortez. I bought the 1881 building right next door. I restored that. I made a business out of that. I wanted that to be a wedding chapel, and it's a very successful wedding chapel. But I'm going to tell you, with the weather up here, I would advise you to buy, to get something over that courtyard, or that front patio area, because you're going to lose, as I did, and I calculated this, 47% of my weddings, because of the weather, had to be held inside rather than the outside. So from a money perspective, you may want to consider, you may want to consider covering that. And you might be able to do it. If you go back to the original design, just build those corners up and attach a roof over it. And if you do a hidden louver in there, you'll be able to get your stars. And then, on those inclement days, when it's snowing, you can close that roof down, and nobody will ever even know it's there. So, just a little word of advice from a person who actually owned an outside venue. But otherwise, I think it's great. So, we can't stay the way we are downtown. I've lived downtown for 20 years. I've worked downtown. I first moved here in 1972, by the way. I saw that downtown, closed up, boarded up, ugly. It was terrible. Everything that's happened has been a fight. It's been a fight with the city. It's part of the reason I'm here today. We've got, if you look at those pictures that you've shown there, none of those air conditioning units are covered. There's been violations for years down here, because we can't seem to get our act together on what we're going to enforce, what's practical. They didn't have air conditioning back in the day. So those buildings were not built to cover air conditioning units. We have to adapt. That's what it means in the design industry. And a lot of times, I have never, ever designed a building, because of changes either requested by the building department or my clients, it didn't turn out better. This is a lot of thought that's gone into this, and I think you've done a very job, very good job. And your client, by the way, has been very patient. I can tell you personally, I probably would have blown my head off making them run me through the wringer like that. And I've been on the receiving end of that. So I'm going to pat you on the back for what you've done. I love the hotel, and just try to stick with it. By the way, the fourth floor is silent. And that is coming from an attorney. And Joe Young, if you can address the fact that in our guidelines, not requirements, it does not address a fourth floor. So if you're going to hire a lawyer to come in and say, we've got a problem with the fourth floor, and they're going to try to fight that on our guidelines, we're not going to win that case. It is silent. So he has met the height restriction at 48. And I'm going to be a yes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Those are really good comments and good ideas.
Okay, Doug, have you finished your presentation?
Wait a minute, can I have Joe address the silent fourth floor real quick in the guidelines?
Yeah, fourth floors aren't prohibited in the guidelines. And if they're not prohibited, then we can't deny a project for that basis. The conversation you all have had has been good in terms of what it meets and doesn't meet, but the fourth floor isn't one of them.
Yeah, because we do have the height limitation. Well, Doug, I appreciate the tour of the Wild, Wild West that you gave us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Keep in mind that the Federal Department of Interior established guidelines for historic districts and for renovation and new construction in those districts in 1988. The city of Prescott adopted their own historic preservation guidelines in 1998, so about 10 years later. So they've been into effect for, you know, over two decades. And those guidelines, in my opinion, are pretty clear and unambiguous. So if future developers want to challenge that, they certainly can. But I think it's a little deceptive to use very, very old buildings and architectural features that preceded the Department of Interior guidelines on historic preservation, so that communities throughout the country that have historic districts can do the best to maintain them going into the future. So that's why we have those guidelines. And that's what we're considering today, is the proposal that you have on the table for how it's designed, and whether it meets the guidelines or it doesn't. And that'll be our job to decide whether to approve it, deny it, or approve it with specifications, or deny it with specifications. So I think at this point, we can move to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, for me?
You've had four comments. You got something new?
Yeah. You and I both said, we're not here to redesign this building, and we are. And I said, they met 23 out of 25, so there's two that are for debate for us today. And I'd like to know what those two are from Alex.
The two criteria that aren't fully being met, first of which is...
You got 23 that are met. There's one that's partially met, and one that we, that's not met. So what are those two?
The first one that's partially is the use of wood doors and framing. And then the second one that is just, doesn't meet at all, is that four-story step back, because it says 100% of the front facade for the second, third floor, including the roof line.
And that's our discussion today.
I want to add one quick thing. We're going to make sure that all construction traffic is routed to Sheldon and Gurley. We're not going to be running anything up or down Goodwin Street, not going to go into the neighborhoods. I just wanted to make that point real quick.
Thank you. All right, let's go to public comment.
Mayor, Mr. Young let me know that the developer's attorney would like to address the councils. Can we start with that, and then we can go into public comment?
I suppose so.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate the council rescheduling this meeting to today. My name is John Riches. I'm the Vice President for Litigation at the Goldwater Institute. Last time I spoke, I spoke about the values of private property rights and the rule of law. And those are actually very much at stake today. But I want to limit my comments to the discussion that has occurred with respect to the Historic Preservation Guidelines. The city's preservation specialist acknowledged that the project is predominantly in conformance with those guidelines. The guidelines are a policy document. They're not a zoning document. There's cases that have made it crystal clear that things like that do not impose enforceable land use restrictions in the same way zoning laws do. And here, this property is zoned for a hotel by right. So the question, then, I think from a policy perspective, is does the council want a four-story hotel that doesn't include these respectful architectural details for which Mr. Grissette has gone through substantial work in time and energy to ensure that they conform with the historical nature of the neighborhood or not? It seems like the only real sticking point, even within those guidelines, Mr. Montoya's point, is the setback to the roof line. But this could be approved. We've already heard testimony from the architect that Mr. Grissette can run a awning out to the sidewalk, so that there is zero setback to the roof line. That would certainly comply. Of course, this council has discretion to say, you know, you don't need to do that. We think that the architectural design as it exists now is sufficient, and is, in fact, more in the spirit of the neighborhood. But that is certainly a stipulation to which Mr. Grissette has expressed his willingness to make. The hotel, I think at the end of the day, has done exactly what the guidelines were intended to do. And that's honor the architectural history of the Courthouse Plaza. We saw that history today from Mr. Grissette's architect. It respects the guidelines. Mr. Grissette has responded to feedback. He's proposed creative solutions to incredibly minor concerns. And rejecting his proposal based on vague, or non-binding, or inconsistently applied guidelines would undermine both the rule of law and the integrity of the permitting process. The council should approve this project and make clear that Prescott supports responsible, well-designed development, including in its historic core, and that this city, more importantly, respects and upholds the property rights of all of its citizens, including Mr. Grissette. If any one of these citizens were up here today and wanted to add a new room to their home, and were being told by this council that they couldn't, based on vague or inappropriately applied criteria, I think that all of us should be rightly concerned about that. And I'm confident that the council will do the right thing, as Mr. Grissette has done, which has tried to work with this council. He has complied with the guidelines. They should be... They should be approved today. His project should be approved today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Again, I just want to reiterate to everybody that we have quite a lot of public comments. We are now up to 37. Everybody is limited to three minutes. If you do not have something new or different to say, I would kindly ask that you defer to your next commenter. I also would like to request that everybody exercise some respect for your council and your fellow citizens while they are speaking. Please do not clap, yell, speak over people. Let's just be civil, okay? I'm going to call everybody up in sets of three so that we can kind of have a little line going and get through this. So I have David Siegel, Glenn Bevelocka, I hope I pronounced that right, I'm sorry if I did not, and Cecilia Allen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. I guess it's up to me to set the tone straight. It's amazing what you find when you do a request for records from the city. Let's take a recap and go back to where we were July 8th. There was no reason for us to be here. Council and the applicant refused to exercise their right to file appeal on the LDC, which is 9.18, which is governed by ARS 9462, 9462. Let me read that to you. Pursuant to this article, the legislative body of any municipality by ordinance, in order to conserve and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, May, item 10, establish districts of historical significance provided that, item C, the ordinance establishing districts of historical significance shall set forth the standards necessary to preserve the historical character of the area so designated. There is no reason for us to be here. Mr. Mayor, you were absolutely correct when you asked staff on the 8th, "Isn't this a new project?" And why staff told you, "We were told to tell, to say it was a continuance," is a misrepresentation. By evidence from the city itself, there are two documents of which each and every one of you has been sent, which proves that this builder reapplied a new program on June 16th that was substantiated by, I believe the gentleman's name is Jacob Blung from Planning Committee, and also it's in the project report, June 16th, and a new number was assigned. It is not the same number that this council rejected in its entirety a year and a half ago. The question had also come up about clear and unambiguous language. I'd like to go to the attorney's response, Mr. Joseph Young's response to counsel last year for Mr. Grissette. As noted in the attached letter, the project may not exceed three stories.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. So the fact is, is that ordinance 3744 was codified into law back into 1998, and that is even recognized in Mr. Young's letter to the attorney last year. Why are we here today? There is so much more that shows that staff has been misrepresenting the facts. A new number has been assigned as of January 16th. This is not a continuance of an earlier appeal. You have one thing to do, and that's to do the right thing. The question is...
Your time is up, Mr. Siegel.
Is there one additional question which needs to be asked?
Time is up, Mr. Sieg.
Does our city council believe in rules, regulations, and laws? Thank you. Or do you want to be subject to the threat of an attorney?
Glenn Bevelocka, I'm a partner at the Historic Palace Saloon on Whiskey Row. Words have meanings. The developer and his representative would have you believe this is a property rights issue. It is not. It is a proposed development issue. There is a real estate term, quiet enjoyment. The definition is the right to use or inhabit certain property without disturbance. The City of Prescott is not restricting existing property rights or attempting to take Grissette's property through any form of adverse possession. The reality is that during the demolition and construction process of the proposed development, it would in fact negatively affect the quiet enjoyment of the tenants and property owners on Whiskey Row. That's a fact. It's not going to happen magically like it's been described to us, and it was interesting because the architect used the phrase, "Hopefully." Think about that. Again, words have meanings. Anti-development versus historic preservation. I came to Prescott 19 years ago. Based on the growth within the Prescott area, I can guarantee you that Prescott is definitely not anti-development. I think references to the ultimate financial demise of the Prescott downtown area if this hotel is not built is a ridiculous statement. If anyone here believes that, I feel sorry for you. The downtown area is doing just fine. I can tell you that factually. The community members who have spoken have been admonished for acting emotional and using words like "character" or phrases like "keep Prescott Prescott." I think we can all agree that overall, people don't come to Prescott to stay at a particular hotel. They come here to walk around the downtown area, experience our Western vibe, and enjoy our numerous outdoor activities. Therefore, the character of Prescott is a legitimate factor. This issue reminds me of an ongoing agricultural issue. Politicians and advocacy groups who have never had dirt under their fingernails want to tell multi-generational farmers and ranchers how to manage their crops and grazing land. The reality is, if they weren't doing a good job and good stewards of their land, they wouldn't be able to pass their land on to future generations. They know best how to manage their land. I sincerely hope that the city council understands their responsibility to be good stewards of the downtown Prescott area.
You have 30 seconds.
Because once it's gone, we can't get it back. I understand it is possible the City of Prescott may be sued if the project is not approved. Some council members have expressed their fear of this. Since we're a Western town, I'll remind you of an old Western saying, courage is being afraid and saddling up anyway.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. We're not covering 3744 with these comments.
Next three after Cecilia are Ken Fiddick, Linda Kahn, and Stephen Parker.
Hello, my name is Cecilia Denise Allen. Several years ago, when my husband and I were looking for a new place to call home, we came upon Prescott and fell in love with the beauty of the trees and boulders, the historical setting, and the rugged spirit of the people who inhabited this city. Now that we live here, we love taking regular walks around the historic courthouse while admiring the various shops and stores and buildings that come from another era. We also love seeing the Chamber of Commerce guides pointing out the rich history of this place and on weekends, when they dress up like cowboys and cowgirls from the past. Unfortunately, as the years have passed, many longtime Prescott residents have moved away from their home, complaining about traffic, expansion, land development, crowds, and the constant fight to preserve this wonderful heritage. It has therefore fallen upon those of us who are still here to be the guardians of this land and to keep the memories of our history alive. But just like in the old days of the past, there are those who invade our beautiful city. Only today, they are not armed with guns and bullets, but with money and lawyers they come here, not to preserve our peaceful way of life, nor to enhance the historical value of our beautiful city, but I believe they come here for the sake of profit. It doesn't matter to them that the majority of the relocated residents here have left the bigger cities for a simpler way of life. We left cities that have been overdeveloped, overbuilt, overpopulated, overmanaged, and resources depleted. Those of us who have made this our home, whether we are relocated or native, want to keep our homeland, especially downtown Whiskey Row untouched. That means we don't want more traffic, more crowds, and our history replaced with a modern structure. And as those of us from the big city know, as we let developers have their way, more will follow. It is unfortunate that I keep hearing that there's nothing we can do, that, that people can come here and build hotels. I don't know what ordinance or guideline or rule that is, but I hope we can someday change that, or that's all we're going to have in our downtown. Thank you.
I already called Linda Kahn and Stephen Parker. So the next would be Stacy Brown.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Here we go again. I'm going to hold a comment until someone else returns. But I am not an architect, and I am not an attorney, but I'm a taxpayer and a voter, and I've lived here for a few years now. The job of the city council is, it can be a thankless task, but I'm glad you're allowing the voice of the people to be heard today and not just the supposed experts out there. I don't know whether a fourth story is legally binding or not, but as a resident of this town, that fourth floor will be seen for more than just across the street. It will not be attractive, in my opinion. But again, I'm not an architect and I'm not an attorney. So I have to strongly disagree with Mr. Stroh when he says, "Oh, you're not going to see it." Yes, we are. We're going to see it from a lot of different angles. Maybe that's not critical to the two points that have been made here, that you're only focused on those two points. But in my opinion, those are very critical points. If the owner wants to meet all 25, and he reduces that final floor or fully complies, then I guess maybe you have no choice but to approve. Barring that, I think there's still room to have him reconsider what he's trying to do for all of us as a gift to the city, as I understand it. So I think you're close. Somebody said that on council today. I don't think you're there yet, in my opinion. And if you've met 11 times, a lot of us have done a lot of reading too, offsite, to be prepared for today and the other meetings that you've had over the last few years. So it's not just a few people that are doing their homework. So I implore you to support your preservation commission. Why have them if you're not going to support their 3-1 denial? So whether it's 4-2, 5-1, or 6-0, please support your preservation commission. I assume that's why you have them.
You have 30 seconds.
To go deep into the historical preservation of the most iconic street in this town that many of us were the drawing card to get us here in the first place. So thank you for your patience, for allowing us to speak. We are concerned citizens at the bully pulpit. Thank you.
Linda?
I am speaking for Anne Marie DeCarlo who's out of state. She says, "I am respectfully requesting that you vote no on the approval of the plans for the Prescott Hotel." I'll lay out my four reasons why. I was utterly shocked that the parking, that the parking plan for the proposed hotel had not been considered as part of the overall project with respect to the impact on the city, the historical charm and character of the downtown. A 47-room hotel requires parking for at least twice that number of cars to accommodate for guests, staff, and visitors. The current available parking is already near capacity, and the addition of so many extra vehicles would make parking virtually impossible for the residents of Prescott to enjoy visiting and shopping in their own downtown district. I understand there is a proposal for yet another hotel in addition to this project, which would only compound the situation. The building of additional parking structures impacts the character of the downtown and bottom line is a cost to taxpayers. Number two, has anyone analyzed the current projection of what this project may add to the tax revenue base on fluctuations in occupancy rates? Other hotels in the near vicinity have indicated that they only approach 100% occupancy levels on weekends during high season. In light of that, is it wise to allow such major changes to the downtown area, not to mention the drastic reduction of available parking for citizens of the town? Pardon me. Number three, in addition to all the logistical issues that have not been addressed, like parking, the economic impact of a prolonged demolition, construction...
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. And the structural integrity issues to adjacent buildings, I would hope that you will not ignore conclusions of the Prescott, I'm sorry, the Preservation Committee, which has rejected the current proposal. Number four, you promised the voters of Prescott that you would work to uphold the historical character of the downtown.
I'm sorry, but your time's up.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Stacy Brown is next, and then I have John Kirkisle, Margaret Ryle, and Ralph Redarty.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Stacy Brown, and I moved to Prescott about six months ago from San Jose, California. And I came here because I watched the quality of life in San Jose deteriorate, not overnight, but year after year, until the city I once loved became unrecognizable. What was once a vibrant, welcoming community has been hollowed out by short-sighted decisions and misplaced priorities. It wasn't just crime or blight. It was the slow betrayal of public trust, the fading of civic pride, and the feeling that people no longer had a voice in shaping their city. In stark contrast, Prescott has been a breath of fresh air. It's a city with real history, with a deep, deep sense of community and beautiful open space and a historic downtown that is cultural and the economic heart of the region. That's rare, and it's fragile. What happened in San Jose didn't happen all at once. It began when the city council started ignoring the recommendations of its commissions and not providing explanations of why in their votes. Your vote is your voice. Your vote is the rubric by which we, the people, measure your performance in representing us. The result was the perception of corruption of the city council, and residents stopped participating, local businesses closed, tax revenues fell, and eventually people left, not because they wanted to, but just because they didn't recognize the city anymore. That experience is why I'm compelled to speak today, because frankly, this moment in Prescott feels dangerously familiar. feels dangerously familiar. And just because zoning says you can build something, doesn't mean you should build anything. Your preservation guidelines, master plan, whatever you call it, that were voted in 27 years ago, were...
You have 30 seconds.
Were evaluated by the Preservation Committee and found to be not compatible. There's an old Meatloaf song, "Two out of three ain't bad," and I loved that when I was a kid. I don't think that's the standard that you want to utilize when making these kinds of decisions, and I think after 27 years, it might be time to codify some of these guidelines into ordinances, because there's a lot more change...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you for the opportunity to, excuse me, the opportunity to speak. My name's John Kirkide. I've been a proud resident of Prescott for the last 11 years, and we love the history here. The history is incredibly rich. You'd struggle to find another place, at least in the West, with half our history, and Whiskey Row is a key part of that. That's why, when I first saw the announcement of the hotel, I saw it in the paper years ago, I was horrified. Who would put a monstrosity like that in the middle of Whiskey Row? It is the most iconic spot. It's directly across from the courthouse. It's on the crosswalk. And Mayor Good raised a huge issue. This building dominates over the other buildings around it. It is in no way subordinate. And while some of the changes discussed today might bring it into compliance, they would only aggravate that situation by making it bigger, larger, and more looming from the street. So I think, based on that standard alone, this building should be denied. If the developer wants to spend time and build it a few blocks away in a nonhistoric district, I'm sure he won't have any trouble, but you were talking about the most historic spot in Prescott. So if this somehow moves forward, he needs to be held to the highest standard on every front, because he's getting the highest-profile spot in our city. One other thing, I was sitting in the back, and I assume it was the developer, because when the architect came back, he shook his hand, kind of slapped him back, congratulation. Same with the Goldwater attorney. And then before he heard any of us speak, he left. So personally, I find that very disrespectful. I think that's, if that's the case, if I identified the gentleman correctly, I think you may want to keep that in mind, because that probably sets a standard for what we're going to see from this developer. Thank you.
Margaret?
Hello. Thank you for allowing me this time. My name is Peggy. I'm an import. A lot of people say I have an accent, but I've been here 45 years. My son was born here, so I feel I have the right to speak. I used to work at JD's, a very rowdy bar underneath St. Michael's, right downtown on Whiskey Row. We had to wear go-go boots and little spaghetti tops, oh my goodness. And as I was wiping a table one night, ducking beer bottles, somebody said, "Oh, Whiskey Row." And I went, "Whiskey Row? Where the heck is that?" And they said, "Babe, you're working it." And I was like, "Wow, two weeks from Boston, and here I am." But anyway, I got a great job over at Rask, well, I worked at Raskin's too, but over at the Stock Room, and I made copies for a wonderful lady named Elizabeth Ruffner. And she was a grand, grand lady. And she was the one that saved Elks Theater. Why can't we band together and save Whiskey Row? It has energy about it. It's a feeling. It's an essence. Heck, it's like if you took the Statue of Liberty and made her a casino, and her plaque reads, you know, "Ladies' Night, Tuesday Night." Don't destroy one of Prescott's crown jewels. The row is, as the row is, the biggest tourist draw, other than the rodeo. Don't turn Prescott into Telluride. That one block, please, leave alone. Can't we use open space money and buy this gentleman out nicely, so that he can build it somewhere else? And leave the row, just leave the row alone. But if you must, this gentleman should pay all licensed store owners around the square two years' income to make up for their loss. And someone needs to get some really good black and white pictures of the row, downtown, Whiskey Row, morning, night, twilight, and dark, because the... Now I just lost what I was thinking. Anyway, the Charlotte Hall will want them for their bulletin board. But anyway, please, save our heritage, save Whiskey Row. Oy vey. Thank you.
Ralph Redarty. And then I have Diane Travis, Rob Johnson, and Regina Kilmer after Ralph.
Good afternoon. I know most of you, and you most know me a lot too, but anyway. I've been thinking about this progress that's been made, and I think we need to honor the historical community and the historical district that we have by keeping Whiskey Row what it is. I've been a member of this town for 86 years, and I've been involved in it for many, many years. So my thoughts are, please, think of what they have said, they turned down, and make sure that they follow the rules. But I really don't want Whiskey Row changed. I personally walk Whiskey Row maybe once a year, but it's the fact that it's part of me and this town, so please, you know, think carefully of what you're about to do. And I thank you very much.
Diane Travis, Rob Johnson, and Regina Kilmer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro temp and Council members. Excuse me. I am Diane Travis, and I serve on the Historic Preservation Commission. Today, I am speaking as an individual and not on behalf of the commission. After further review of our preservation guidelines and the details of the Plaza Hotel project, I believe my vote at our last commission meeting should have been in support of the project. The proposal meets the established height requirements and incorporates appropriate design elements. As for the setback not being met, I believe the alternative would have been the patio on the back, and then they would have raised the height of the front, which would not have fit in with Whiskey Row at all. So I am willing to compromise on that position. So upon reflection, I no longer feel that the building's four-story height is a sufficient reason to withdraw with approval. This has been a difficult decision, and I recognize that my change in position may not sit well with some members of the community. However, I believe it's important to acknowledge when further reflection leads to a different conclusion. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Rob Johnson. As Diane stated, I am also on the Preservation Commission, and what I'm about to say is just my own personal opinion, based on everything I've come to understand through this process, that while this project is within the 48-foot height, in my opinion, it does not conform to the surrounding structures with respect to the scale and massing. Okay? So considering that there are no buildings along that section of Whiskey Row that have more than three, that have more than three stories, one could ascertain that the guidelines, when they were written, were developed around the three-story premise. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Everybody, I'm going to ask you again to please not clap or react to speakers, so that we can keep moving, okay? So Regina Kilmer, Mel Roop, Rick Spray, and then William Fields.
Good afternoon. My name is Regina Kilmer. I'm the general manager at the Hotel St. Michael. First, I'd like to state that we support any property's owner right to develop their property in any way that is allowed by zoning, as long as that development is in conformance with the rules and standards to which they have to adhere, even though we believe that the economics of hotels on the square, which run at 55% occupancy and 129, can't support another hotel. We believe that a property has the right to spend his money however he wants, as long as he is in conformance. We have all heard a lot about the Arizona Vice statue, which requires clear and measurable criteria for accepting or denying proposals. We believe that our objections to their current plan are clear and measurable. First, the city's governing documents cite the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Preservation Rehabilitation. The city itself claims to adhere to these standards. Rehabilitation standard number nine specifically requires the size of new buildings to be appropriate in size to historic buildings in the surrounding area. The Department of the Interior interprets this as, quote, "New construction must be subordinate to contributing buildings." A clever lawyer might argue that this requirement is ambiguous, if, say, a new building was 99% of the size of its neighbors. An even more clever lawyer might argue that there are really big contributing buildings down the block that should be used for comparison and not the ones nearby. But that is not what the standards say. The standards refer to the ones nearby. No one with a straight face can argue that a new building that is 200% the size of its neighboring subordinate. No one can claim that something two times taller that has ever existed in this part of Whiskey Row is subordinate to the historic environment. That would be like arguing that a 300-pound NFL lineman is subordinate to me when I'm standing next to him. 48 feet tall is an allowable maximum per zoning in this location, but 200% bigger than your neighbor is clearly also measurable and clear. By comparison, the new proposed hotel at the old City Hall is much further away from Whiskey Row and its neighbors. The standards clearly allow larger buildings when the distance is a factor. This is why one hotel may be allowed and another might not be, because the standards...
You have 30 seconds.
The Department of the Interior and its technical preservation services arm provide a great deal of clarity, and we refer you to them. Second, the historic master plan for the courthouse policy states, "A limit of three stories shall be implemented immediately." The proposed hotel is four stories. This, again, is clearly measurable. We'd like to thank the City Council's work and consideration.
Everybody else has been short, I gotta raise it up. My name is Rick Spray. Been here before. I'm the chair of the Prescott Preservation Commission. Back on July 9th, the Prescott Plaza proposal once again came before you, and you sent it back to us for review. Contrary to Mr. Stroh, we were not confused. I was not confused by anything that was said, and I take exception to what you said. You had also mentioned that you had spoke with Nancy Burgess regarding this, and that she approved of it. She does not. As a matter of fact, she has no opinion whatsoever. I'm going to get to some of the stuff that you are concerned about the most. I've had a presentation, but I'm not going to be able to do it. You've already pretty much hit the fourth floor with the open design. It does not meet any of the criteria whatsoever. If there are, is going to be a fourth floor, which I believe is going to be moot here in a second. It has to be zero setback to the roof. It cannot be open. It must have windows, which are basically on the second and third floor of this building, which are technically correct. Another issue is, by their own plans, the west elevation is actually over 53 feet, not 48 feet. If you look on his drawings, it's specifically just about six inches over 53 feet. It is not within the guidelines. And it's been hit a couple of times before regarding the footprint within the square. It is, according to our manual, the code for us, three stories. It's written four times, actually, within our guidelines. I'm going to read those to you. On page 8.9, it mentions one story at 1624 feet, two stories at 2836 feet, three-story buildings shall be between 40 and 48 feet. Does not mention four stories. On page 8.4, it said, "Building heights may vary from one to three stories without regard for width." Says one to three, does not say one to four. Page 8.19, "A limit of three stories and," not "or," but "and" 48 feet in height shall be implemented immediately to preserve the character of the district." Page 8.22, adhere to the historic height ranges from one, two, and three-story buildings. No four stories, period. And the courthouse design guidelines...
You have 30 seconds, Richard.
Okay. The guidelines that you, I think, were given, there's on page six, on the right side, there were two drawings. On the very right one, there's four buildings. There was a drawing of a four-story building underneath it, says no. The two- and three-story buildings, yes. Four stories says no, implicit right there. The next one shows a drawing of three buildings, one story, two story, three story, with their height limits. There is not a drawing of a fourth floor, period. So that's what I have for you. Please don't be threatened by attorneys. This is for you guys to decide. This is important to the city. That's why you have attorneys to deal with people like them.
Thank you, Mr. Spray. Okay, let's hold it down. Come on, Mel.
Well, thanks for being so enthusiastic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, based on what I've heard of...
Mel, can you pull that microphone down for the tens of thousands of people watching
The Councilman Montoya really hit the nail on the head, and so I totally rewrote my presentation. And, no, basically, when he said the city, or he's not an architect, I pulled out some of my material, and that's part of the problem. The city on their staff does not have a qualified architect. And when I was a city planner, if we didn't have the right staff to help us, I went out with a process that I sent to you in an email yesterday, and I used that process to hire someone qualified, the most qualified we could find. In one case, I hired a consultant from Philadelphia that was one of the most prestigious in the country, to actually prepare a urban design element for our city plan, and it's very good. Anyway, so that process I sent to you in that email is what I think the city should do, to hire an architect to help support you. Next point, the use of the word "criteria" and "guidelines." It's driving me kind of crazy, because half the people say "guidelines" and half of them say "criteria," and there's a very big difference there. And I think if there is a lawsuit, ultimately, one of the big issues was going to be, people will say, "Oh, I thought they were guidelines." No, no. And if you read the report from the staff, it's called "criteria." I looked it up in the dictionary. "Criteria" is correct, like we use it in our criteria. It means standards or principles by which something is judged or decided. The word "guidelines" is defined as a general rule, principle, or piece of advice. The developer's been trying to get all of you to use the word "guidelines" incorrectly. to use the word "guidelines" incorrectly for a long time. We need to realize that those are criteria we have, not guidelines. Big difference. Third point, details. One of the reasons the project is clearly not-
30 seconds, Mr. Rup.
It's, I brought a board that I'm gonna leave with you that I explained in my report. The project is lacking in details. Their architects said today, "We simplified the design and eliminated detail," end quote. The definition of historic, when you look at the pictures of Whiskey Row, it has incredible detail. When you eliminate it, it's not in conformance with the city's goals. Thank you. I'll leave this with you.
I have William Fields, then Lori Reiner, John Stevens, and Rick Patoki.
Mayor and Councilman, I appreciate your time. I'd like to, Doug, you rented upstairs on our building, and our last name is Fields, not Field. I'd like to correct you on that. Now, Mr. Grissette owns a very valuable lot, and I can understand his property rights. Just down the street, there's a bank put in. That kinda doesn't go with Whiskey Row, but that's property rights. Oh, boy. There's so many things. The last meeting, at the preservation meeting, at the very end of the meeting, Doug came up and said, "Well, I talked to Mr. Grissette, and he's willing to take out the Juliet balconies." Well, that's in the rules, anyway. It's like you guys are giving them things that he doesn't have, and he makes it sound like, well, gee, okay, let me do this, let me do that. And then you say, "Well, it's against the rule." "Oh, okay. Well, I'll take one of them away." And that seems to be the way this process has been going. It's been going on for four years. Now, when this building is being built, our building right next door is the Arts Prescott Building. So I'm gonna ask the Goldwater Institute, if our building falls down, and I want to put a horse corral in there, because that's my property rights, you know, because horse manure does sort of smell like Whiskey Row, then will you represent me on that? One important thing, I know that there's a setback in the back alley there, but it's a health and safety issue, and I mentioned this at the preservation meeting, but people walk out of those bars on the south side, and they do not look, just like they don't look coming across from the parking garage. And some days, somebody's gonna get run over in the alley. The alley is an alley. It's for big semis, and they're constantly doing it, unloading and loading up goods for the businesses on Whiskey Row. And the alley, on one of the diagrams there, it's got the brick sidewalk going across the alley. And it's like he's got two fronts to the building, the front and the back. That's a major safety issue. And I am serious. If our building falls down, we're gonna be presenting to you that we are allowed to put in a corral, because people would love to ride around the courthouse on a horse. You know, that's the Western attitude. So let's get realistic on what's going on here.
You have 30 seconds.
One other thing that Doug is correct on is all the buildings on Whiskey Row are three foot off. When they did the surveying after the fire of 1900, that's when our building was built, in 1901 and 1902, the Arts Prescott Building. So we're real worried about the construction, but that's part of the building permits that's going in. But I really hope that the Goldwater Institute does represent us, because we have our property rights, and if our building falls down, I want to put a corral in there. Thank you very much.
Lori Reiner? John Stevens?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm John Stevens. This is a good project, and it deserves your support. It's obvious to me that the applicant has made substantial, good-faith efforts to breed it into compliance with all the requirements, substantials and otherwise. And for that reason, I think you should support it. And the other reason you should support it, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
I have Rick Patoki, hopefully I'm pronouncing that right, sorry. John Grafitus, sorry. Michael Brogie, Tammy Bates.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. You gotta love attorneys, don't you? I'm waiting for the laughter. Come on, guys. Okay, so I'm a 30-plus-year director of property casualty underwriting for a major insurance company from Japan. We handled all of the United States business for all the Japanese companies that we insured. And let me tell you, I've underwritten everything from Monpa stuff to little small apartment buildings to giant, multi-billion-dollar tech industries. And I would not stay in this hotel if you paid me. Why? Because it only has two means of egress. The front, that goes through the lobby, that I can see, because I'm looking at those diagrams, and I don't see any firewall, fire stairwells at all in this thing. I see two stairwells, front and back, that goes, that looks to me like it goes out a back door. I'm not sure if it goes out that back door. But what happens when you get John Q. Psycho that comes in and uses that B-word, wants to shoot one off in the lobby? Well, how are you gonna get out of there? When you've got tons of people on that roof and a full occupied hotel, you could have no more than one means of egress out through the back. I don't give a doggone about sprinklers. I'm a property and casualty underwriter. I can underwrite sprinklers all day long, but sprinklers are only there to help you get out. It's not there to save the building, contrary to popular belief, just to survive, to get out. You're not gonna get out 100-plus people out of possibly one exit, and I have to underwrite to the absolute worst scenario. And that is a full hotel with a full group of people that are drinking their Budinsky's off on the top floor, and then something happens. And that worst thing happens, we see every single day. Just ask the people if from 9/11 and those, what happened when they couldn't get down those stairwells, because the doors were blocked? Stuff happens. And you've got to have a reasonable means of egress. And I know everybody's been talking about all the property risk exposures here, but that's what I underwrote for over 30-plus years. I was known all across the world for what I did. And I'm telling you right now, that thing is nasty. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Counsel? It's a powerful decision you have to make. You've been given powerful decisions by the people. They voted you in. You represent them. I hope you do. I hope you really do represent. What I'm hearing here today is more negative than positive. And what I saw on a survey done online back in February, again, 300-plus comments or polls, whatever, that were more on the negative side than the positive side. I don't see a lot of people coming up to speak to say something positive about this. Whether it's done or not, it's beyond my control. It's in your hands. But I would like to say that in the last meeting, there were a couple of comments made I'd like to address, because the council makes rebuttal to our comments, and we don't have a chance to rebut back. So there was a comment made about emotions. It's a very emotional topic, but we really should stick to facts. This is emotional, because that's what drives our conversation. That's all some people have. They were born, raised here. Maybe they moved here. They fell in love with Prescott. I've been here two and a half years. From the day I came here, the very first time just to visit, I kinda fell in love with Prescott. Something hit me in the heart. That's emotional. To see change is emotional. Whether it's good or bad change, it's still change, and it's all emotional. That thing that hit me in the heart, the thing that drew me, there's a guy here in the audience with a MAGA hat that I absolutely love. Thank you. I support you. And I also support a corral downtown. I'd love to ride a horse around the courtyard. You know, there's a third hotel on being proposed, possibly. Well, I said last time, how much is enough? You know, I don't know. Maybe it'll just be called Hotel Court or something. But I'll get back to the, to the, to the original point here. There's something that was said that was "keep Prescott Prescott." And without pointing fingers, Ted said, "Hell, I don't even know what that means." Well, I've been here two and a half years, and it hit me the very first day I just visited here. You've been here a lot longer than me. So if you don't know what that means, you're in the wrong seat, in the wrong town, in the wrong state. And I would say, go back to Jersey. That's all I got to say.
Hold it down.
Michael Brogie?
Counsel, thank you for this opportunity. There's the spirit of the law and letter of the law. I'd just like to bring a point. When at some future date, the High Court of History sits in judgment on each of us, and you could tell by the turnout today of fellow citizens, this is a very important issue affecting all of us. According to Wrether, in our brief span of history and service, we fulfill our individual responsibilities. Our success or failure will be measured by some future recording of history. There's a reason we call that a historic district. You, as the stewards of our city, have that responsibility to protect our history, because once it's gone, it's gone forever. Thank you.
I have Tammy Bates, Nancy Beats, and Wendy Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Tammy Bates. I'm here on behalf of Kayla Stazinski, a sixth-generation Prescottonian. She and her family have had businesses, ranches, and have poured their time, talent, and treasure into this community for many, many years. I come before you today as a proud and deeply concerned resident of Prescott. We are once again asking, no urging, you to vote against the proposed hotel project that would result in the demolition of three historic buildings on Whiskey Row. This isn't just about bricks and mortar. This is about the soul of Prescott. This city's own Preservation Commission has already recommended this project be denied. They understand the value of our past and what it means for our future. When they say this project is incompatible with the preservation of our historic district, we should take that seriously. Yet we've heard statements suggesting the community doesn't know what they're talking about. That is not only dismissive, it's flat-out wrong. Let me give you just one example of how much this matters to your constituents. Within 24 hours of the last council meeting, a single Facebook post opposing this project garnered over 2,800 likes, 856 comments with only two in disagreement, and 789 shares. And those 789 shares have led to even more likes, comments, and engagement across platforms, amplifying a message that is loud and clear: Prescott does not want this hotel on Whiskey Row. We are not uninformed. We are not hysterical. We are engaged. We are passionate, and we're paying attention. Whiskey Row is not just a tourist attraction. It is a symbol of who we are. Erasing parts of it to make way for yet another hotel, a project that so clearly lacks community support, sends a message that developers' interests are being prioritized over the voices of the very people who live, vote, and invest their lives here. We are asking you to respect the process, honor the recommendation of the Preservation Commission, and above all, listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Nancy?
If it's doable. My name is Nancy Beats. I'd like to give Wendy my three minutes. Is that doable?
She is on the list, anyway, so she's welcome to come up if you don't want to speak.
I'm gonna give her my three minutes.
No, we go in the order received.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you again. As I said in previous meetings, I want to give you my credentials, and I'm not going to address this from an emotional standpoint, even though I thoroughly agree with what's been stated before. So I happen to work for a company that we finance, I'm an underwriter, we finance ground-up construction, rehabs, projects of that nature. I'm also HUD certified. So health and safety is extremely important to me. So in regards to this being, this hearing being relating to design, I'm going to give you some of my thoughts on that. So Whiskey Row was rebuilt after the 1900 fire with limited engineering codes by modern standards. Beneath the row, there are legacy basement structures, old utility lines, and uneven fill soils from multiple building generations. Hotel foundations would likely require soil testing and engineering support to stabilize the load. That's a potential for uncovering undocumented voids or infills that could collapse or require mitigation, which would affect the adjacent buildings. Even though there's gonna be some spaces between it, it's still going to affect it. Let's go on to another one. Preservation of streetscape and load transfer. The new hotel may use steel or post-tensioned concrete framing, far heavier and taller than the original two-to-three-story brick storefronts. This vertical load shift introduces wind shear forces and load concentrations that adjacent masonry was never designed to absorb. What's the ramifications? Concerns that the new vertical massing could create a canyon effect and stress unreinforced walls of remaining buildings. Rooftop mechanical systems, HVAC elevators, might leak vibrations or heat into older adjacent spaces. The neighbors. Pressure to retrofit neighboring buildings with additional bracing or fire separation, which could require invasive upgrades to the neighboring- So this is, yes, this is about design, but it's also about the design of Whiskey Row. Several architects and historians in Prescott, and no, I don't have the names, have warned that the scale and weight of the proposed hotel would place excessive stress on the row's structural, structurally delicate, and culturally irreplaceable buildings. Some have proposed that at a minimum, any new development be set back from the sidewalk and no taller than two to three stories, which agrees with that gentleman from the Preservation Committee, to minimize physical and visual disruption. So what are the risks or effects? Adjacent building cracking, shifting due to deep foundation excavation, potential fracturing of old masonry during construction, collapse or settlement of undocumented substructures.
You have 30 seconds.
Older buildings not designed to handle lateral pressure or mass, basement flooding and risks due to altered flow patterns, and construction may sever or reroute key service lines. So I think I've made my point that all of this needs to be investigated, because without it being investigated, how could we mitigate it? Thanks for your time very much.
Okay, I have Karen Graham, Chris Nemo, and Jeffrey Campbell.
I'm good.
Chris? And then Hugh Salisbury, after Jeffrey Campbell.
Hi, my name is Chris Nemo, and I manage a business in historic downtown Prescott on Gurley Street. As you can probably tell, I'm not originally from around here, but I have absolutely fallen in love with this town. We've heard the name of Barry Goldwater being invoked along with the Arizona Private Property Rights Protection Act, or Proposition 207, as enacted in 2006, to safeguard property owners from government actions that diminish property value without compensation. And no vote for this proposed hotel in no way diminishes the existing property value of the owner. The proposal may, however, diminish property values for the surrounding businesses, especially during a lengthy and complicated construction period. The potential for damage to historic Whiskey Row cannot be underestimated, and the impact on surrounding businesses must be part of this council's vote. The recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission also said the building does not meet the requirements for approval. This proposed development also sits in contradiction with the downtown-specific area plan. We have to talk about the exceptions to the Arizona Private Property Rights Protection Act, and that is the public health and safety exception. Specifically, this project will add unnecessary burdens to our traffic and parking infrastructures and will negatively affect visitors, residents, and the workers who make up so much of this, of the attraction of this amazing town. Additionally, deliveries and arrival of guests in the heart of Whiskey Row will also add to traffic and therefore, public safety issues on Whiskey Row and in the back alley behind the building. Extra parking requirements in the all-day, in the only all-day parking facility will- adversely impact the workers in historic downtown Prescott. Finally, here's a warning from my hometown back in the UK. Many historic buildings were destroyed and modern replacements erected. Those buildings and that history can never be replaced. Once the development floodgates opened, so much more history and character has gone forever. These modern buildings, which are already out of character, are now being demolished, having never brought anything of value to the town. As someone who has managed, project managed, historic building renovations in buildings from the late 1700s, and worked with councils, and seen the firsthand the damage unfettered development can cause, I strongly urge you to say no to this project. Your decision today will have a lasting and significant impact on the Prescott of today and the Prescott of the future. Thank you.
Jeffrey Campbell. Hugh Salisbury. And then Deborah, is it Julian? Can't tell, sorry. Okay. Sandy Griffiths.
Good afternoon. Thank you for hearing me today, Mayor and City Council. My name is Hugh Salisbury. I've been in Prescott for about four years. Couple things in hearing interesting was, I had, if you were thinking if you were going to approve of this, I had a commercial glass business for 40 years in San Diego County. If you even think about approving these doors and windows, if you even think about approving these doors and windows, I may suggest you look at them before you approve this project, because it can really go, once you've approved it, I'm going to tell you, there are lots of things that could go wrong, won't come anywhere near what you think it could be. So just to let you know. Second of all, I've, in fact, I've even written to the newspaper about this, if you approve this project, and you know it, this known word called precedent. If you approve this, you're going to have a very hard time keeping anybody else from doing the same thing. And I was kind of thinking, kind of funny, is that if it does happen and there is precedent, those windows on the side of that building, those people, they could buy the adjacent buildings and knock them down, and then their windows will work. So something to think about on their second, first and second floors. Now, the real reason why I'm here, this is an article that I just read this morning, and it's something to, I don't know if you know about this. Are you aware of, let me get the name, it is Roundtree versus Page, and this was just decided in the Arizona Supreme Court. And I'm going to read the implications of this. It says, "This ruling has significant implications for local governments in Arizona, potentially giving residents greater power to influence or even halt local projects. It also raises questions about the balance of power between the elected officials and citizen initiatives in shaping local policy. The ruling has been met with mixed reactions, with some praising it as a victory for citizens, for citizen participation, and others expressing concerns about its potential to hinder development." It's just something that I want you to be aware of. It's just passed, I just read this this morning. So something, just to think about. So, thank you.
Sandy. And then I have Christopher Lamberton, Richard Thompson, and Linda Thompson.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Sandy Griffiths, I'm in strong support of the proposed Plaza Hotel design. This development represents more than just a new building. It embodies progress, resilience, and a forward-looking vision for our community. Communities like people must grow to thrive. We cannot merely survive by holding on to what was. We must embrace what can be. Let's not allow the fear of change to stand in our way of meaningful progress. I urge the city to move forward with the Prescott Plaza Hotel design. It's time to invest in the future of Prescott. Thank you.
Very good, Council members. My name is Chris Lamberton, resident of Prescott for just six and a half years, but I dare say that, like many of the people in this room, we all came from someplace else. It's probably a relatively small number who are native Arizonians and Prescottonians. I understand there's a gentleman here who is from New Jersey, is that correct? Are you from New Jersey?
Does that have relevance?
It does. I'm from New Jersey. I grew up there. My family, my ancestors fought in the Revolution, and I have a great appreciation for history, which is one of the reasons why I came here. I was impressed by Prescott's absolute appreciation for the history that this great city has and the county and the state of Arizona. I'm not going to go too much into some of the things that have already been mentioned. I'm sure that you've got a resolution to a question of where in heck are all these people going to park? The Juliet balconies, to be correct, only the balconies in the center on the front and the back are Juliet balconies. The other balconies are extended balconies, and they are intended to be occupied by people who step outside of the building. And I question whether that's a, particularly a good idea, especially overhanging a sidewalk that's busy with people. I'm not going to go into the question of the height, because that's already been elaborated here. One thing I am curious about, though, and I'm, I've been, I'm coming to this relatively slow in involvement, because I've been watching and listening and so forth to what's happened at the previous meetings, but I'm curious why there's never been, that I'm aware of, suggestions for alternative use for these three lots, for these property. I understand that the buildings probably are not all that significant historically. I'm a historian.
You have 30 seconds.
But I think alternative use, I think if you took a straw poll of the people here by a show of hands, who would support this or who wouldn't, you'd see a lot of hands going up saying, "No, we don't want it." The five-foot alley or whatever it is on each side that's going to support the use of these windows doesn't make sense. If I were designing a hotel, I would want to have maximum floor space and not give it up for, give up five feet on either side of the hotel.
I'm sorry, but your time's up.
Thank you.
Richard Thompson, Prescott. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mayor Protem, for allowing me to speak. Prescott's Whiskey Row is not mainly a street. It's a living testament to the city's vibrant past, a place where such brick and storefront whispers stories from a Bycon era. For generations, locals and visitors alike have admired its historic charm, which is carefully preserved through the architecture, scale, and atmosphere of its buildings. The proposal to build a four-story, 47-room hotel in Whiskey Row represents a significant departure from the architectural and historical context that defines this terraced district. Such a large structure would dwarf the existing buildings, many of which are one, two, or three stories tall and date back to the late 19th and 20th centuries. The scale and style of the proposed hotel risks overwhelming the historic streetscapes, eroding distinctive ambience, and making Whiskey Row unique. And I think it's pretty absurd to say that, well, because the criteria doesn't say four stories, it can be four stories, or five, or six stories. It's very clear, and to Councilman Montoya's point, the intent of those criteria was three stories. Every other building on that street is a max of three stories. I agree, too, that you are not architects. You are judging whether this meets the criteria. It's already been determined by the Preservation Committee, it does not meet the criteria. And to Councilman Gaimoni's part, that's what you're judging on. If that's what you're judging on, then the answer to this should be, no, this project is not allowed. And I propose that to you. The other thing I propose is, very quickly after this, after you turn this down, instruct staff to update the criteria of the preservation and the master plan to exclude four buildings on Whiskey Row. Thank you.
Linda Thompson, and then I have Jeff Falls, Autumn Klein, and Kathy Rusing.
Linda Thompson, Prescott. Everyone's been so eloquent, so I'm going to leave off just about everything that I was talking, was going to talk on, but I do want to thank the gentlemen on the Preservation Committee for clarifying why we have to have three, not four stories, or five, or six. That was very, that was great, because the explanation is right there, and I need to see that. I wanted, you know, we, people talked about parking, but that seems to be something we're not allowed to use as a criterion for making a decision such as this, but all the people watching online and the 500-plus who signed the petition and the ones in this room, we know that parking is a problem here for us in the city. But about the beautiful Whiskey Row, I've been here for about eight years. We moved, we say we escaped to America, and I'm so proud when I show, when I, when I walk around this town and I'm looking out over Whiskey Row, I'm pinching myself, like, wow, I love this, I live here, this is my home. So please, keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Jeff?
I'm Jeff Falls with Haley Construction. I wasn't going to speak today, but I...
Lift your mic.
But I was, I wasn't going to speak today, but I was inspired by a friend of mine here today. I really just wanted to speak in regards to the construction techniques that would be used on a building like this. I don't, I haven't seen any of the plans or anything like that, but as some of you know, Haley Construction's been around here for 65 years. We've been a part of some of the most iconic remodels of some of the great buildings here in town, and we've used many techniques, most of which have improved the foundations of the buildings around them, you know, whether it be a well-known house on Mamazuma, or Elks Theater, or any of those. And I just wanted to kind of clear the air on that for everybody. Thank you.
Klein?
Hi. My name's Autumn Klein. I own the business directly next door to this project. I opened my store in Whiskey Row in 2007, 18 years ago. I just have some things I want you guys to think about. This project sums up all the changes happening in our town. Growth can be great, but it needs to be controlled and done right. When this property was purchased with the intent of building a hotel, there were guidelines in place for building in our historic district. Those same guidelines are still in place. They're not new. This is where due diligence comes in with the buyer. I respect private property rights and improvement. I also respect guidelines that are in place for a reason, to preserve our historic district and maintain a certain look. Sorry, I'm really nervous. I feel that this project is going to happen no matter what eventually, but I ask that the project is hold to the same guidelines as every other business downtown. We all follow the guidelines and work to preserve and maintain the downtown. This is our means of making a living, but also our way of life. When the bank was remodeled on Whiskey Row, they asked for a sign to be placed outside of the guidelines. They were told no, they followed it, they respected it. The Whiskey River Tavern recently, they had to paint over the sign on the front of their building because it wasn't up to code, so they painted over it. They all followed the guidelines over something as simple as a sign with which they complied. So I'm worried, I think this hotel should also have to adhere to the guidelines. When the bank remodeled, it took almost a year for a remodel. They closed almost 20 public parking spaces to the public during most of the time. The alley was closed at timed, times. This has an impact on businesses, locals, and visitors. Please consider all the impacts during demolition and construction, the extra work and loss of sales for businesses surrounding, and loss of employee hours. Consider all of this, and then the other hotel at City Hall being built at the same time. Downtown will be a mess for years. A lot of locals already avoid downtown, and this will seal the deal. Our year-round businesses need them and appreciate them. I've been working downtown for over 25 years. I've seen a lot of changes and businesses come and go. The landscape is changing, and so is the foot traffic. I understand Mr. Grissette owns the property and can use it as he sees fit as zone for. However, I'm on Whiskey Row daily and know that deleting three businesses will contribute to less foot traffic. The bank on the corner has not helped foot traffic. It's closed every single weekend. The less we have to offer our locals and visitors on Whiskey Row, the less they will come. I'd be more inclined to this project if the retail spaces were actually incorporated into the design. We need to keep Whiskey Row interesting, fun, and viable for years to come. Please uphold the guidelines, maybe tighten them up, consider use. Our visitors come to enjoy our town and sleep in a hotel. They do not come to see a hotel. Our locals love our downtown area and would like to see the history preserved. Thank you.
Kathy Rusing. And then I have Julian Haley and Bruce Senkow.
Good afternoon. Another long meeting to a packed house. We haven't been addressing the entertainment district, which applies here, too. We've been talking about the historic district, but I like to address the entertainment district. I was here when the entertainment district was proposed, and we supported it wholeheartedly because it was supposed to keep our downtown vigorous and vitalized. In fact, I went down to the city and got the map amended so it included Rusing Square on Goodwin and McCormick. And we talked about the parking. We did not address overnight parking, okay? The feeling was that the St. Michael's and the Head Hotel would use the parking garage for overnight parking. People could park anywhere they wanted. It was to encourage pedestrian traffic downtown for people to shop, eat, drink, visit the bars, and have fun. It did not visualize a 50-room hotel with overnight parking on Whiskey Row, where the patrons, I guess, are supposed to run out every two hours and move their cars. Let's use common sense. The spirit and intent of the intent, entertainment district, did not include a new-build apartment complex or a new-build hotel, so let's look at the parking and apply our current parking zones and requirements for this new build. Also, there is a question as to the HVAC systems. Is the height restriction, does that include the HVAC systems upon the roof? Thank you.
Julian?
Good evening now, not good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I didn't prepare anything, but wanted to address a few issues that we've heard today. Most importantly, what I wanted to kind of center back on is that we're here to talk about whether or not this project meets the guidelines. From my understanding, walking into this meeting, 23 and a half of those guidelines were met by this proposal. were met by this proposal. And am I correct in that is the roof line and the windows? Are those the two issues? Okay, so to clarify on the windows, I do have knowledge of what those windows would be. They either are going to be a wood or a wood-type material that fits that guideline. So I guess that would bring us down to the roof line. So I'm not sure if any of you are aware of the Drake Report that was done in 2020. The reason that I bring it up is it was a city-funded report that was in conjunction with the Prescott Downtown Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce. Within that report, on page four, page 11, page 12, on numerous pages within that report, it talks about an overwhelming desire for rooftop balconies specifically around the Courthouse Plaza. This report was done over a number of months, days, was visited by a specialist who is a specialist, fortunately, he has passed away, nationwide, hired by, obviously, the city, PDP, and the downtown, and the chamber. So clearly, there's faith in his recommendations, but the demographic was, there was many, many focus groups done over different demographics throughout the community, and that was an overwhelming desire. There were a lot of comments with that, within that, that support this. Now, granted, that was done in 2020, so we're five years out, but if you remember, we had a little thing called COVID within that, that kind of set us back from the roadmap that was provided to the city.
You have 30 seconds.
So I just wanted to point out that the issues that we're talking about are those two. There's overwhelming desire for those balconies, and that, as council, what you're here to answer is it doesn't meet the guidelines, A. B, it does on 24 of 25 points. And last, that, as council, you have the ability to listen to the reports that were funded by your own office, saying there's a desire for a balcony like that. Thank you.
Bruce Senkow?
Hello, Mayor and Council. You know, listening to the discussion here today about saving Whiskey Row, you would think he was gonna blow up the whole Whiskey Row and put in a Walmart. It's one ugly plywood building with a historic Harley-Davidson's. You know, that's what we're talking about, not all Whiskey Row. So I, it just, you know, let's think about it. And this debate kind of reminds me of the movie Footloose. You know, it involved a guy that moved into a town, found out that the town banned dancing and rock music. You know, we're talking about one building with a nice structure that's gonna enhance downtown, it's gonna give us a new facility that people can go up and sit and enjoy the courthouse square. I don't see why we're getting wrapped around the axle about saving Whiskey Row. We're not destroying Whiskey Row, we're enhancing Whiskey Row. I urge you to approve it.
That's all, Mayor.
Now that we've heard of all the public comments, we've heard the proposal from our community development department, and we've heard the legal opinions and legal conditions, so again, I'll state the same thing. We're here solely to decide on this proposal, no previous proposals, no historical conditions that existed in the 19th, or maybe the 18th century. We're dealing with the federal Department of Interior guidelines that were established in 1988, and then this city adopted their own set of guidelines that followed those federal guidelines in 1998. So since then, historic structures within this district have been expected to comply with those guidelines or criteria, and to make sure that the Whiskey Row maintains its historical nature. So with that said, I think it's pretty clear, at least in my mind, that this proposal does not meet the guidelines as established. Even if it's 95% accurate, if you're on an airplane trying to land at an airport, and you're 95% to the runway, you're in big trouble. So I know that's not a great analogy, but I think it works to some extent. So with that said, I'm gonna move that we deny this application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. So a yes vote will be to deny.
Passes four-two.
Well, I applaud, and I suppose I shouldn't applaud, but thank you all for staying and spending the time to listen to this debate, and the developer obviously has some direction if they want to continue to proceed with this, but I have a strong opinion that the Whiskey Row historical nature needs to be maintained, so this meeting is adjourned.